Good evening. I call to order the March 14th meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission. On behalf of the Commissioners and the planning staff, I just want to thank all of you all for being here. I've seen some of you from time to time, and as I've always said, and the Commissioners agree, this is the city's business. The, you know, we're here for you all, and our sole purpose is to protect interests and hopefully make the right decisions. We are a recommending body. The people that will actually make the decision is the City Council. But again, they listen to our comments and recommendations, but they ultimately decide which direction to go in. With that said, I'm going to call on Mr. Keith to give our invocation tonight, please.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you now, Lord, thanking you for your grace and your mercy that you've shown us up until this time. Now, God, we ask that you will lead us and guide us throughout these deliberations. Give us clear minds to listen and to be heard. Now, Lord, we ask for the guidance of your Holy Spirit to take our hands and lead us throughout this duration of this meeting. It's in Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Keith. The first item on the agenda are approval of last month's minutes. The Commissioners have received their packages, and I've had a chance to review those. So if there are no changes, corrections, comments, or recommendations, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Like signs nay, and the ayes have it. Okay. We are scheduled for executive session. Mr. Moore, could you explain to the audience this here tonight how long that may take or what? I assume, because we have not had one.
That's correct.
And so I assume that they have the pleasure and the luxury of sitting there waiting on us.
Yes.
Sorry.
So this executive session is to receive legal advice from our City Attorney, Jim Peterson. This should take us approximately 15, 20 minutes total.
Okay. All right. Do I need to formally adjourn?
You need to make a motion to enter into executive session.
Okay. I call for a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like signs nay, and the ayes have it. Again, I apologize. We don't do this very often, so we will be right back with you as soon as possible. Y'all had to be the one to, we had a motion to adjourn and continue with our meeting now, and again, no action was taken. So we will go to our first item on the agenda as far as a public hearing and matter and position for action. This is PC 2023-07. Ms. Elaine, good evening.
Good evening. This is a request for an annexation and to zone RG3. Some parcels located off East Crawford Avenue. This is located, it's a little hard to explain because it's not on a main thoroughfare. These are a number of parcels that are located on the interior of some subdivisions off the Pamlico Highway and just south of Freedom Boulevard. And they get kind of beauty with the city limits largely through the floodplain in the rear. This is a closer map of it. And the access points to these parcels are East Crawford Avenue and Briannon Drive, which is down on the south side of there. The zoning map shows that it's open space in the rear and C6.3 for the other part that's in the city. And the request is for RG3, which is a single-family residential with smaller lots, and that's the intent of the developers. The future land map, future land use map calls these out for residential suburban, so residential use is an appropriate use for it. And these are just some site photos. The one on the left is the end of Crawford, East Crawford Avenue, and then the one on the right is the end of Briannon Drive. They have received permission from the DOT to open up those two entrances to access the subdivision. And we mentioned that there were some questions about water and sewer in here in the packet, but those have been resolved. So the next step after annexation would be a sketch plan of the layout, and that would be brought to you all as well. So that concludes staff's report.
So Ms. Elaine, what you're saying is the issues that were unfulfilled, and that is the property was landlocked and they resolved that, to staff satisfaction?
That's correct.
And they now have water and sewer to staff satisfaction?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. What we will do is we will go into the public hearing portion of this, and what I'll do is invite those that are against this particular request to come forward. And if you do, I ask you to come to the podium and give us your name. And I will limit that depending on the number of people that prefer to have a discussion. And then I'll invite those that are for this request. I ask that there be no talking, no cell phones, and you address the commission as you do say. So opening the public hearing, all those or anyone that would like to get up and speak against this request, I invite you to do so, if you'll raise your hand. Your name, sir?
Sir, my name is Thaddeus Driggers.
Good evening.
We live at 2300 Broad Drive.
Yes, sir.
Which was the house where the access road is between us and Dolly Heager's house. Have some questions. I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'm not saying I'm for it either. But we have such a problem coming out onto the Pamlico Highway in the mornings from this area. A lot of times to get from, from where we get on the Pamlico Highway at the end of Broad Drive, till you get to the railroad tracks, it'll take 10 to 15 minutes. Now, if all this housing development behind us is going to be coming out there and over on Briannon, what's that going to do to the traffic situation? How is that going to be addressed? Or is it going to be addressed? Do we know how many houses are going to be in that development yet?
Mr. Driggers, I'm going to turn this over to staff. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
If you're aggressive with points.
With this being just the annexation and zoning, we have not received an official sketch plan at this point. What triggers the, a traffic study to be conducted within our code? Any subdivision or development with 100 more units or lots will trigger that and cause a traffic study to occur. Additionally, DOT with their ownership of the roads and that right-of-way, they may or may not cause additional work or a study to be done. So that will occur later with the sketch plan prior to any development occur.
And Mr. Driggers, did you have any more questions?
Yes, sir. Do we have a sizing on the houses as of yet? I understand the lots are going to be small, but any square-footed sizings on the houses?
The zoning that they're requesting, if they are annexed into the city, will tell planning what size homes can be built in there and what size lots.
That's right. The zoning will only regulate the buildable area, so while there are obvious restrictions with that, there are certain amount of buildable size they can build on each individual lot, we will not regulate the size of the homes. So while they certainly provide that, once we get into building plan review with the Building Department, we'll know that, but that's not something that we review or approve.
Approximately, how long would it be before they started any kind of road construction in that area? Any idea?
We do not know at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Driggers. As I mentioned to you earlier, we are a recommending body. The City Council will ultimately decide, but also it has to be approved for annexation and the specific zoning that the property owner has requested will have to be approved by City Council as well, which will determine a lot. So would anyone else like to come forward against or just have questions? Hearing none, I'll ask anyone that is for or in favor of this request, please come forward. Good evening. Yeah?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Chahal. I work with DDC Engineers, 1298 Professional Drive in Murrow Beach, South Carolina, 29577. Again, I work with DDC Engineers. I'm here representing the clients that are sitting in the back row. That's a PC Land Development Company LLC. The staff did a really good job of presenting the report, and I clarified a couple items there. But we do have about 56 acres located, as shown on the maps, currently. The property is unzoned in the county, so we're looking for zoning as well as annexation. The zoning district that we're looking for, the RG3, the general residential, seems to provide a good flexibility in terms of modern lot sizes while also preserving a good amount of open space. So that's why we've looked after, or looked at going after, the RG3 district. Also want to mention too, that we view this as really kind of like an infill project, giving its location close to the medical center, close to the airport, close to downtown, as deployment centers. And I did want to point out, you know, the comprehensive plan, Focus Area 2.1, Managing Future Growth Strategy 2.1.2 states to provide additional attention and resources to promote infill development and redevelopment and to reinvest in established neighborhoods. And that rationale is listed, says there are many sizable undeveloped areas around Florence that provide an opportunity for infill development where existing streets and utilities may be readily extended at minimal cost. And we think that this site fits that criteria to a T with water and sewer in very close proximity to the property. And again, we are contiguous to property that has been annexed in previously. Did want to mention a couple things from the staff analysis. Again, our, there's, the statement in the staff analysis that states the RG3 will also permit townhomes duplexes, multiplexes, multifamily. We are not trying to do that. It's not the intent of the application. It is purely for single-family homes. So I wanted to just put everybody's mind at ease with that. The properties are essentially landlocked, other than Briannon and Danville. That will be the primary point of access. The extension of Crawford would be a secondary access. And I need to go over correctly on this, but I believe any residential housing over 30 units requires a second access. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's why we're looking at providing that access as well. So just wanted to mention that. We have rectified issues with SEDOT and the City. We have some emails with their support of our request. And again, we are just looking for a recommendation of approval at this point in time. We recognize that we still need to produce the sketch plan in order to answer some of the questions that we've heard tonight. Until we get, until we know for sure we have annexation in place and zoning, we just have to really move forward with the lot, with the site plan at this point in time to be able to really answer a lot of these questions. But I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that you have, and again, the clients are here as well. Thank you.
If you'll steer right here. Do the Commissioners have any specific questions?
Where was your secondary access again?
It's off of Crawford. There's a platted right-of-way there. It's kind of like a paper street.
Yeah.
Between the two houses that the gentleman was speaking about, and so we'd be looking at extending that into the property. But Briannon to Danville would be the primary connection.
And that right-of-way is wide enough to accommodate?
The right-of-way from Crawford is 40 feet. We would be looking at 50-foot right-of-ways within the development. And if they go Briannon, it's 30 feet, Briannon and Danville. So we're anticipating some improvements there.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
I'd like to know, probably from the attorney, will there, will there be a zoning or annexing, annexation notice put out before this, or has it already happened?
It's already happened. They've received letters twice.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve as requested and submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like signs nay, the ayes have it. Okay. Next item, thank you, Ms. Elaine. PC 2023-09. Mr. Johnson, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So this is a sketch plan application for the Grove Townhomes Phase 3. So here's the parcel. It'll be approximately 6 to 7 acres portion. Phases 1 and 2 of the Grove Townhomes are just to the west, and the new Hope Health is the little carved-out rectangle from this parcel. Current zoning is the Grove at Ebenezer Plan Development District. And future land use is residential. So the Grove PBD, they have their own development standards, and for the Grove Townhomes, they do follow this Table A from the ordinance that was passed by City Council. Here is phases 1 and 2 that was previously approved by Planning Commission. It was 139 townhome units, and it was approved by Planning Commission June 12th of 2018. And then this phase, which will be to the east, will be 13 buildings totaling 79 townhome units. There were some minor discrepancies. City provided water. We'll maintain it within this phase, but as far as the sewer and the streets, those will be maintained by the HOA.
Mr. Johnson, did you, sorry to ask you to repeat this. You said that the developer and engineer have rectified those discrepancies?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So water public, sewer private, roads private, and they do have utilities off of Grove Boulevard. And that does conclude staff's report, except to say that after this, they will have to go through the development plan process, where they'll undergo utilities, will approve the roads, stormwater, all that good stuff. So this is just the initial approval of the sketch plan. And that does conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions from the Commissioners? I want to remind the audience that this is a sketch plan review. We do not have a public hearing. With that, it is a process that this commission goes through in a step forward in a development. It's certainly the early stages. So with that said, I'll call for a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve as submitted and presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like signs nay, and the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Are you sticking around for round two?
The next case was actually, we're requesting that it be deferred.
Okay.
Due to some, not quite receiving everything at this submittal deadline, and just to give staff a little more time to review, we would ask that this be deferred until next month.
Do you want us to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you. The next item is PC 2023-11, and Ms. Elaine is up.
She attending today.
Yeah.
It's a good thing this Microsoft's flexible. All right. This request is to zone, similarly to, is very similar to the past case. It's a request for annexation of a Phase 1 of the Smithfield subdivision, which is located off of Smith's Drive, Smith Drive. This is a picture of the whole parcel, but only Phase 1 of this project, and you'll see that in a moment, is being annexed or requested for annexation. In zoning, they're requesting for it is also the RG3, which is the residential with smaller-sized lots. It is surrounded by commercial zoning on the south side part that's in the city, and then the rest of it is in Botany Acres subdivision in the county. It is called for being residential auto-urban with the future land use map, which is residential with smaller lots. So it is in keeping with the future land use map as well. And then this is the sketch plan that was approved by Florence County, and the area outlined in yellow is the part that yours has been requesting annexation and zoning today. And it's 48 lots, and it is considered their Phase 1 out of, I believe, three total phases. So they're just requesting an annexed portion, and city water and sewer are being installed, and that concludes staff's report.
Is staff recommending that they are meeting the guidelines?
Yes, they are.
What?
This is, this is certainly a unique situation. Typically, what we have seen previously, so the property is being developed in the county, they've gone through counter review, received all the permitting through the county. There has been, now that the developer is through with the property, he has started selling lots to various builders to, you know, construct single-family homes on that. And the builder has shown interest in annexing. And what we, at a staff level, in order to keep a more, to not create a situation like we have in Windsor Forest or Spalding Heights, where a subdivision has a number of properties in the city and then a few that are not in the city, you know, a little bit of a checkerboard situation. We have worked with the developer and the builder to annex this as the phase, as each phase gets completed. And you will see in the next case with a development agreement, which is something that we've done previously, where we, where we manage that annexation as the property gets developed.
So it is required, that's where I was going. That is a condition upon?
That's right.
The annexation is the annexes all of it as it gets developed.
That's correct. That is, the developer and the builder for that matter, they have agreed with the development agreement that, and that locks them in. It's the development agreement, and I was going to explain this in the next case, but for, for the future with our next matter, a development agreement does two things for a developer. One, it locks in the zoning, so if we have, for whatever reason, have a new zoning get established, they can still develop under that previous zoning, so that they know what they purchased and annexed into the property. They know what they're, they're working with, essentially. And two, it requires them to annex upon development of that property.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, staff? This will require a public hearing, and so I will open this up to anyone that is against or just has questions. They're not necessarily favorable. We ask you to come forward. Over here, please. Thank you.
My name is Robin Iskett. I'm the president of the Neighborhood Association.
I'm sorry, what was your last name again?
Iskett.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the president of the Neighborhood Association in Botany Acres. I live on Woodbine, and my house backs up to the field, and I've been out there 26 years. And our main concern is the traffic situation, and he answered the question earlier with the, if there are greater than 100 homes, there should have been a, it should trigger a traffic study. So this particular development already has the plans, so did they do a traffic study on this one?
Yes, so the sketch plan, which is the entire development, it was approved at the county, and they, they have the same requirements of the city with traffic study. And I believe Woodbine is, I don't believe Woodbine, Smith Drive, where it enters into Palmetto Street, they had to receive an approach permit both for that and tying in the stormwater as well. So DOT has reviewed that and approved that as well.
And here's what I want, we have concerns, and here's the consideration that they may have not have thought about this, but Woodbine is a mile long, and behind this subdivision, they're trying to build 200 houses. To the right of it, there's 200 houses. So you're adding 153 houses. The thing is, is they don't have an access road directly out to Highway 76, which is, you know, a four-lane highway. There's no road out because it's considered commercial and be too expensive. So the two access roads, one comes out by the fire station on Smith Drive. The other one, eventually after Phase 3, will come out onto Woodbine. Now, what they don't, may not have considered, right now, the 48 homes that are being built, they're going to have one access road to Smith Drive. And what, Smith Drive, there's a big sinkhole on Smith Drive already, at, near the ditch. There's a sinkhole there. If anybody rides by there and you look to the right, there's a sinkhole, and when you get even more traffic, that's going to be a problem. Somebody's going to have to fix it eventually, be it the city, county, I don't know. All right, but there's no traffic light out of Smith Drive onto 76. So what's going to happen, and this has already happened with the newest subdivision to the right of us that has 200 homes, there's no traffic light for them to go out on Smith Drive. So in the mornings and in the evenings, you're after work, it's bad to get in and out of there. Well, what they do is they come down and get on Woodbine, which is a mile long, no stop signs, and they just barrel down there, even though it's 25, 30 mile an hour speed limit. They just zoom down there and go to Botany Acre, Botany Drive, and go to the stoplight there, because there is a stoplight, because Botany Acres has two entrances, Smith Drive, Botany Drive. Botany Drive has a stoplight. So even though this subdivision is up front, and right now, Smith Drive will be the only access road, they're going to find, ooh, it's going to be easier for me in the mornings and coming home from work to go through this traffic light, come down Botany Drive, zoom down Woodbine, which is a mile-long straight, you know, thoroughfare. And people do race down that road, and they, but anyway, the traffic study, I don't know that they took that into account. And it's just, by the time Phase 3 comes about and they open the access road to Woodbine, you know, people are going to be coming out of there and trying to get to that light. And Woodbine itself is just, you know, it's just a concern. And I know you said they did a traffic study, but they may want to look at that again. And I will tell you, there is a sinkhole at the end of Smith Drive, and eventually, I mean, it's going to collapse one day, but anyway, that's, that's my concern. And it may even get stop signs on Woodbine, there are two roads that cut into that, maybe stop signs there to slow people down, I don't know. But those are the concerns.
We'll certainly take note of the sinkhole and your concern. Some of these issues will need to be addressed by Florence County, because Botany Acres is located within the county, so we can certainly provide that to them as well.
Yeah, because I know, I know, you know, the city, they're going to do what we're going to do. I mean, there's, you know... I mean, there's, no matter what we say, but I will say, it's just, like I say, you've got two hundred houses on this side, you've got two hundred houses behind, and now you're putting one hundred fifty-three more houses. And the access roads are going to be on streets that just aren't going to be able to handle it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Do commissioners have any questions from Ms. Iskett? Thank you, Ms. Iskett. Would anyone else like to come forward that would be against or just have questions? Yes, sir, please.
My name is Gary Williams and I live on, at twenty-nine twenty-four Woodbine Avenue also, just down the street from Ms. Iskett. And I just want to reiterate basically what she was saying and make you have a better understanding. There's, there's two entrances to Botany Acres, one by Carroll Yaw Burrows and one by the youth fire department. And what's happened, thank the Lord for Hugh Levman and Will Darty, they got us the traffic light up there at Carroll Yaw Burrows because you wouldn't believe what a drive it was trying to get out of there. And so what happens now, everybody who lives over there in Ebenezer Reserve and Botany Acres also, which is a total of about four hundred houses, they come down and go to the traffic light up at Carroll Yaw Burrows because that's about the only way you can make a left-hand turn out of that neighborhood. And so I guess what I'm saying, you would lessen it, it's going to be a big impact since you get another hundred and fifty-three homes in that area. So we need to do what you can to lessen the impact and help our neighborhood. We've got a great neighborhood. I just left there a while ago, a woman pushing a baby carriage, you know, and people running up and down the street. And right now, it's like Ms. Iskett said, I don't know how it happened, but Woodbine Avenue, from what I understand, is a state road. We've got a state, a city, and a county road all in the same neighborhood, you know? And so I've been to Jay Jordan to try to get him to put four-way stops in on Woodbine Avenue to kind of slow the traffic down and maybe people wouldn't transverse as much. But we need to do what we can to lessen the impact of that hundred fifty-three homes because we've got a mess out here now. If y'all been down Palmetto Street at five o'clock in the afternoon, it's absolutely terrible. You can't even think about making a left turn out of there. And so one of my ideas is to put a traffic light at the corner of Palmetto Street and Smith Drive. And then you'd have people on that side of our neighborhood would be able to get out, out, you know, out of their neighborhood without traversing through the whole neighborhood. And so that's, that's just my idea and I want to voice my opinion and I hope you take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. We appreciate anyone that comes forward. Okay, I'm going to ask if anyone would like to come forward in favor of this. If you, it doesn't necessarily mean that you need to come forward, but seeing no hands, I will.
Can I ask Mr. Drew a question, please?
I'm Mr. Drew, but you're, you're welcome to get back up.
You're a city planner?
Please do it to the microphone because we're recording.
It took a hundred homes before we all did a traffic study. Have you already done the traffic study?
This was all approved Florence County. So this is, this is a subdivision that the County of Florence reviewed and approved. So we are, with this case, it is just the annexation. So essentially, this, this subdivision has already been approved and permitted to, to be developed at the county level.
I understand that, but I don't think you've answered my question. Has the traffic study already been approved?
To our knowledge, it has been approved, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, as Mr. Moore has said, you know, the zoning request, city planning feels that it is appropriate. And you know, the question is the annexation and we're here really to vote on that. The, the plan is already approved on the county level. Again, we are recommending body and Mr. Williams and Ms. Iskett, I would suggest that you attend the city council meeting when this comes on their agenda. With that, I close, well, I don't think anyone was going to speak in favor. I'm sorry, sir, I've already allowed your time. I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
I move we approve the annexation. There obviously is some traffic concerns there, though, that I think that we would probably recommend that staff takes a good look at with the developer and if there's possibility to offer these folks some relief, that intent be made to try to do that. But I think, you know, I think as it stands, it's, we need to approve the request annex.
Can I have a motion, do I have a second? Thank you. Have a motion and second to approve. Is there any discussion?
When we go through the city, you going to put that recommendation in about traffic?
What we, what we typically do with any residences that are concerned with, with traffic issues, because specifically it being Palmetto Street and Smith Drive, the D O T are the governing body that will review, approve, and make any of those improvements. And so it's, it's very common for residents to come to city staff with concerns and we will, we always pass those concerns along, but at the end of the day, that is for D O T to review and approve.
That would be the state.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. I'll call for the vote all as in favor say aye. Like signs nay and eyes have it. Okay. We have P C twenty-twenty-three dash twelve. Ms. Lane?
Thank you. This is, as Mr. Moore said, this is simply the development agreement for this phase of Smithfield subdivision. And you do have a copy of it in front of you right now. And you were going to explain a little more about that.
So a development agreement is, is an item that the state felt was pretty necessary, especially after the recession in two thousand eight, to be sure to, one, preserve any developer concern when they start a project and whether or not the market has some issues and, you know, that gets delayed a little bit. They can, they essentially go into the project knowing what it is that they can, they can do. So we have done this a few times now. We, we passed a development agreement with Grove and we've been going through this process with that developer. As each phase gets developed, we, you'll see it before for sketch plan and also for annexation. It goes, I believe the annexations with this development agreement goes straightforward forward to city council. Secondly, what it does is ensures that the developer annexes upon development. So there is one slight change within the development agreement. This is, this is a standard development agreement with the exception, we have added all of the reviews and more importantly, the assurances of road improvements, all the infrastructure will be passed on to the city. So right now, the developer, they went into an agreement with Florence County stating, you know, if the road fails within the next two years, they are responsible for any of those repairs, same with stormwater, all of that infrastructure. They make the necessary paperwork, insurances, escrow, that type of thing to ensure that those improvements can be, that have a warranty on them. So what this, the added information into the development agreement is the assignment of those warranties being passed on to the city now that they're located within city limits.
So Mr. Moore, to summarize, you're saying that the city attorney and the planning department approves of this document as submitted or?
Yes, as submitted.
Okay, all right. We as commissioners, this is a twelve-page contract and we are not going to go through it and scrutinize it. We are going on recommendation of our staff and our city attorney. So with that, there is a public hearing, but is there any further questions of staff regarding this operating agreement or development agreement? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone that'd like to speak in favor or against or have questions, you're welcome to come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
I make a motion, we approve it as written?
I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted and what we have in front of us right now, which has been approved by city attorney and city staff. Is there any questions? Are there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote all as in favor say aye. Like signs nay. And we've been announced on every one of these, it's always refreshing. Thank you. I have a motion, Mr. Moses?
I move to have you adjourned.
All right. I have a second. I have a second, motion and second, all as approved say aye. Thank you. Our next meeting is, Mr. Howard, as we already said, is April eleventh.